Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 11th, 2014, meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 6:05 PM. We have a roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Jarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here.
Live's Lu tonight will be led by Councilmember Sananian, the invocation by City Clerk Artie Chris.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Friday is Valentine's Day, and many around the country and the world will be finding ways to express their love for the special person in their life. But the love that we celebrate on Valentine's Day is not only for our partners and spouses, it's for everyone who helps us make our life better by being a part of it. Mother Teresa wrote of love, saying, "Love begins at home, and it is not how much we do, but how much love we put into that action." And love does indeed begin at home, in our homes where we live, and the cities and the communities where we make our homes. We are capable of planting the seeds of harmony and compassion by putting love into our every action. Today, as our city's leaders discuss and decide this issue before them, we pray that they are guided by this emotion of love in all that they do for us and for the city. We pray for the love we have for our families and people who make our lives special, guide our city tonight, and express itself through every act that we do at home, at work, and in our neighborhoods. We pray for the men and women of our armed forces who will mark Valentine's Day away from their loved ones, and pray for their safe return home soon. Pray for all of this and for peace always. Amen.
Amen. May we have your report?
Agenda for the February 11th, 2014, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Thursday, February 6th, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
First, Mr. Jarian, I know you're not going to be able to stay the whole time, but you wanted us to consider adjourning in memory of Armin Kachaturian tonight? Would you like to speak to him?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Armin Kachaturian was taken from us at a very young age. He was only 46 years old. He passed away suddenly last week in the presence of his wife and his two children. He is a Glendale boy at age 40. I can call him a boy, I'm much older. His family was very much involved in the Glendale community, and as you said, I would request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory, Armin Kachaturian.
We will. Thank you very much. Somebody's called to the family. Two young kids, that's rough. Okay, what's next, please?
At 3, under Presentation and Appointments, 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, February 18th, 2014.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for February 18th, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, for the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority, to commence at 3:00 PM, we have one item, Director of Community Development. This is proposed YMCA 70-unit Affordable Rental Housing Project, Glendale Art Colony, to be located at 121 North Kenwood Street. Also that afternoon, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council, one item, Director of Community Development. This is regarding initiation of a general plan amendment and rezoning of 10 properties along Fernando Court and Cypress Street, from industrial to mixed use in the land use element of the general plan, and from the industrial to industrial-commercial residential mixed-use zone. And that evening, Mr. Mayor, we do not have a City Council meeting. We will commence with our meetings again on February 25th at 3:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next item at 3B is Mayor's Commendation to the Americana brand Crusoe Affiliated for the donation of their playground equipment to Verdugo Park.
Okay, Mr. Lemo. Front and center. I'll read the little plaque we're giving you, which you can pass on to your boss. Americana ad brand, presented to the Americana ad brand Crusoe Affiliated. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I would like to thank the Americana brand for the donation of their playground equipment to the city of Glendale. The installation of the equipment resulted in a significant amount of savings for the city totaling $268,000. We truly appreciate your generosity and look forward to an ongoing fruitful working relationship with Crusoe Affiliated. I know my granddaughter used to use that equipment down there, so it's very gratefully accepted. Say something.
Thank you. Before you start, just so we're clear, when the mayor says, "Pass this on to your boss," he means Mr. Crusoe, not Mrs. Lemo. Okay? I have many bosses. Mr. Crusoe is number two to Mrs. Lemo. First of all, thank you very, very much, Mayor, and Council, and staff. This was able to happen through some great vision by our city staff.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we had a little bit of an idea, staff was able to work it out and get it handled right, and we thoroughly appreciate it. To put this in an environment where more people can use it, and it's not so tied to, you know, a kid may want to go there and then tell, and then the mom or the dad wants to go shopping, it was always tough, and this is a way for more of the community to enjoy it. So thank you very much for the opportunity. We love being in this city. It's a great, it's a great relationship and marriage between the Council, the staff, and our team there. So thank you very much.
Sorry about the Miss No-Moron boss. Because I only have one boss too. She's with the grandkids tonight.
Again, actually, I have three bosses. My granddaughter just hasn't figured out that yet. But thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, what is next, please?
Next, at 3C is Reappointment of Armenian as Glendale's Representatives to the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District Board.
Who's doing the talking? Is it just the motion?
There's only one representative to the vector control, and it just requires a motion and a vote.
I'll move to C. She's been doing a, sorry, it's 3C. She's been doing a great job. She's been reappointed, so happy to see her wanting to continue her work.
Hold a second. She isn't here by chance, is she? Is she here? No.
Not here.
I guess she figured she's going to get the job. Yeah. Very impressive resume. American Society of Clinical Pathologists, Armenian Engineers and Scientists Association. Eight years of general clinical microbiology testing, including parasitico, mycolol, lole, virolagi, and I give up on the next one. Six years of microbiology supervision. She's off the map. We're lucky to have her, willing to serve again. So is the motion?
Mr. Mayor, would you remind people what the Vector Control District does? Doesn't control the airplanes flying in or anything like that. It's an unusual name. It's a sanitized name, actually, for some of the things.
Yeah, it gets into the birds and the bees.
Say it like.
I didn't mean it the way you're thinking. I'm thinking, no. Parasites.
Mosquitoes primarily.
Mosquitoes.
Bermin infestation.
West Nile virus issues.
My wife had one, one of eight people in the United States have had it. She got a bite and almost died because of the bite. But she didn't, and the vector control is one of those that's looking for these bugs. I'm not an expert in this, I'm more into engineering. Do you want to add something?
No, I think, I mean, it deals with dangerous.
West Nile virus is the most common.
Dangerous illnesses that can be transmitted by, say, birds and bees.
Presumably, in this case.
And rodents.
In this case, it was, it was grass that did it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Jarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Okay, next, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Friedman.
I wanted to mention that several of us attended last week the gala called Dancing with Diamonds for the Glendale Educational Foundation. It seemed to be very well attended. I hope they made a lot of money. They're a wonderful cause that help our kids here in the community, and I want to congratulate all of the organizers and thank all of those who attended. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, Chuck Wilkie, you want to speak about the library?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Weaver, Councilmembers, city staff. I'm Chuck White from the Glendale Library, now our Library Arts and Culture Department. Just wanted to let you know, if you haven't heard, that author Chris Bajalian is coming from back east. He's going to speak about his book, Sandcastle Girls. It's a novel set at the time of the Armenian genocide. He's a great speaker. He's an educator. He's a, he's wonderful with kids. He's wonderful talking about the process of writing. I think what, what we were most interested in is that he went back and looked at his own history, and it took him two times, he said, to write this book. So the first one, "We'll Never See the Light of Day," it just wasn't very good. He got that out of his system, wrote another book. It's fascinating. It's, it's set, or told from the point of view of a woman who goes to Armenia and Turkey and the area to administer first aid, basically. And it jumps back and forth between present time and that time. He'll be at the Central Library on the main floor on Thursday, February 27th, at 7:00 PM. I think you all have bookmarks. You know, we, he's, he's really a fine speaker. He really talks about his craft. I think we're going to have a lot of fun with him, but our, our conundrum was who to pick to spar with him on stage. We needed equally heavyweight sort of person. We got our own city clerk, Artie Kasakian. It will be the rumble at the Central Library. I expect good things from both of them. It'll be an enlightening evening. Artie's looking forward to it, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, what is next, please?
Next item on the agenda is Consent Items. A following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I have no cards. Is there a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Jarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Next item is Oral Communications. However, this will be the three-minute community event announcement portion. The full five-minute portion is reserved for the conclusion of all city business.
I have three cards. First, and I hope I'm reading this right, we, Linda Beesmeyer? How close did I get?
I don't know.
I guess when I'm conquering Armenian names, you throw a dent.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, hello. My name's Rolinda Beesmeyer. I'm a 37-year resident of Glendale, and I'm here to represent the Glendale Youth Orchestra. We, this is our 25th year, and we are trying to encourage the community to come to our concert. We are a resident company that presents at the Alex Theater, and as I said, this is our 25th year. Our concert is Sunday, March 9th, at 7:00, and we have, next week I'm coming too. And so that I will have my DVD, so you can see my program. And so we're trying to just encourage the community to see and hear the most marvelous youth orchestra, you know, in the Glendale area. And so our program, we're going to be presenting Bellini's Overture to Norma Beethoven, and then we have a live musical presentation, and we'll be showing Charlie Chaplin's Rink movie in the orchestra. We'll be playing the music for it. And so we are just trying to encourage the community and the members of the council to come and hear and see us. Thank you very much.
May I suggest if you can reduce that to a slide type? You're coming back next week, you said?
Well, okay, the 24th, you said.
They're going to come back again. So we can get on the air, then everybody at home can see it.
Right. I'll have a DVD then.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Mr. Sananian.
Comment. Ms. Beesmeyer, where do you draw the musicians from, the kids?
Well, not very many are from Glendale, because, well, we just don't have that many people. It's $700 a year to join, but the thing is, our conductor, he went to Juilliard, and he's very good. And so he's been with the orchestra for 10 years. I've been a board member for 14 years. My daughter played cello there. And so, but the kids are better than Glendale High School, where my girls went. They're just fantastic, and we just need more community support.
I hope a lot of people turn up.
We hope so.
Unfortunately, I, along with some other members of City Council, will be in Washington, DC on that day.
It's a Sunday night.
We, yeah, we're there over a five-day period, which covers the weekend, but best of luck, hopefully a lot of people come and attend.
We hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evelyn Horrigan. Did I got that one right?
Yes, that's right. Hello, Mr. Mayor, and hello, councilmembers. I am inviting you to two, two events. On March 1st, Saturday, the Christian Women United of Glendale is presenting a program. The Christian Women of Egypt has written a service that called Streams in the Desert, and Father Furman of St. Mark's Episcopal will speak also. The event is at Salem Lutheran Church, 1121 North Brand. That's at 9:00 AM, where you will have a breakfast, and at 10:00, the service begins. And this is a community-wide, interfaith ecumenical effort. The second event is the 19th Annual Glendale Foothill Communities Crop Hunger Walk. On behalf of the all-volunteer organizers, I invite you to participate if you can. This is, this is, is an effort for four food pantries in, ranging in Glendale, from Glendale to Tahanga. And so I invite people of Glendale, Montrose, Lacrasen, Crescenta, and Sunland Tahanga to participate. People may pre-register online at the website, cwsglobal.org/GlendaleCA. And the, like I said, it benefits four food pantries, plus the Meals on Wheels program at the Salvation Army, and the Food Voucher Program for hungry students at Glendale Community College. Canned goods count too. The Allen Feinstein Foundation Challenge is again participating, and they will be donating based upon our, our participation. So I thank you all, and I invite you to join us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last speaker, Bill Abbe?
Off.
Off.
That's a K, that's okay.
Well, I see the K-N-A-V-F.
That's a U, yeah. That's good enough. Thank you.
Okay. Just say your name again.
It's Knopf. In Germany, it's Knopf.
I'm German.
There's no excuse for that.
I know, I'm German, I shouldn't.
I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor and the City Council and staff for allowing me a few minutes to, to announce. I, my name's Bill Knopf. I'm with the Glendale Rotary Club, and we were pleased to announce our second annual Jewel City Fun and Fitness Bicycle Ride. Laura, we expect you to be there. It's going to be, this year starts at Verdugo Park on Sunday, May 18th. The Glendale Rotary Club, along with Walk By Glendale, and our major partner, Glendale Adventist, are putting this on. We have some significant sponsorship from Steven Beige and Sam Carvahal, who happen to be Rotary members. This ride is going to benefit the Glendale Youth Alliance, Homena Men, and I will be able to pronounce that better as we move along, and also the Glendale YMCA. The ride, again, is Sunday, May 18th. The first, the most, the easiest ride, there's three different rides, easy, medium, and very difficult. The easier ride starts at 10:30, and it's a, we call it the Ride and Glide. It's down through Glendale, through the Flats of Glendale, through downtown. The Fun and Fitness Ride takes in a little bit more of the hills of Glendale. And at 7:00, we call it the Gear Grinder Ride. It's a 45-mile, significant, challenging ride. There's, in addition, there's going to be bicycle safety courses for new riders and children who are just starting to ride. That's going to be open from 8 to 12. So we would like to invite you all to participate, stop by, say hi, and like to earn enough money so we can make some significant contributions to our beneficiaries.
Thank you very much for coming. Yes, Mrs.
This is a great event, and I was going to do the Gear Buster Ride. No, I was going to do the Ride and Glide, for sure, but I just checked my calendar, and I will be out of town once again. And Mrs., you should, next time you should consult.
Next, we'll call you first.
Yeah, exactly. But, great event, please come back and let us know if you have a Facebook page or something like that, because I'd love to share it on my page, and I'm sure others would as well. Get the word out.
We'll get that over to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you. I have no more cards. What is next, please?
Next, at 7A is Ordinance Amending the Contract with Calpers for Local Miscellaneous Member Representatives Represented by the Glendale City Employees Association to Apply Provisions of Section 2516, Employees Sharing Additional Cost of 3% to Applicable Members. This was introduced February 4, 2014, by Councilmember Friedman.
Okay, I have no cards on this one. Mrs. Friedman?
Sorry?
You moved it. You, you introduced it.
Okay, I will move 7A.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Jarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Next, under Action Item, 8A is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Playground Installation Projects at Brand, Maryland Avenue, and Verdugo Parks Award of Contract for Brand and Maryland Avenue Park Playgrounds and Completion of Playground Installation at Verdugo Park. A1 is a Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Awarding a Contract to Playpower LT Farmington, Inc., in an Amount Not to Exceed $104,800.16, An Authorizing Purchase and Installation of Playground Equipment at Maryland Avenue Park. A2 is a Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Awarding a Contract to Landscape Structures, Inc., in an Amount Not to Exceed $142,898.33, An Authorizing Purchase and Installation of Playground Equipment at Brand Park.
Well, we're sure upgrading our park, I mean, our equipment in the parks lately, and I know there's more to come.
Yes, sir.
Was it true yet? What would you like to say on that?
We just would have a couple of quick slides for, for the council. I'll bring up our Park Planning Administrator, Emile Tadovose, making sure that the playground equipment is safe and suitable, something that the council has prioritized, and Emile has some good news for you.
We do. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Good. Give us a little good news.
Just a little. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you are aware, one of the primary goals of our department, Community Services and Parks, is the safety and security of our parks, community centers, and amenities we provide. In that vein, we have an ongoing program where we inspect, we actually have one resident inspector, certified inspector in our department, and another one in Public Works that routinely, actually, I believe one and a half in Public Works, that we routinely, routinely go around and inspect all the playgrounds citywide and track not only their age and wear and tear, but also their conditions and applicability with current codes. The first slide demonstrates the seven parks that will be getting new equipment as part of this fiscal year. You'll see that by the end of fall, I should say, this and next fiscal year, but the funding has all been appropriated. These seven parks are part of the current program. I'm happy to announce that Dunsmore is actually on its way to being completed, and Verdugo Park, which we received the playground from Americana, has already been installed and completed, open to the public. New York Park should be open within the next couple of weeks. This item before you addresses Maryland and Brand Parks. And then the next two parks that will be addressing and coming to you shortly are Pacific and Palmer. So with those, we have seven parks that will be getting brand-new equipment in the coming year. The next six are a list of our urgent, or our upcoming place structures that will be needing replacement within the next couple of years, and these are the six sites that currently are not funded. And we're hoping to be able to, as we look at the current budget year, we're hoping to add some funding for those parks. Very briefly, we take advantage of the, of the city's membership with the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is a contracting agency, and the city is a member of, which allows us to be able to work off of their list of contractors and providers to be able to purchase and install our equipment. And that's what we exercised with purchasing the equipment for New York, as well as Dunsmore, and the next two parks that we will be proceeding. Earlier, you made mention of the Verdugo Park installation. This is really a bad slide, I apologize for that, but that's the playground in green and beige that we were, we received from the Americana and was installed at the Verdugo Park, the north playground. We have two playgrounds at that large park. This was the equipment that was there long ago that we removed as it was falling apart, and for the longest time, the sand area was sitting vacant without a playground. So we were happy to receive the donation and proceed with installation. Next up is Brand Park. This is the one, this is the playground north, which addresses the ages between two- and five-year-olds, and this, this is the proposed playground structure. It's being provided by LSI, Landscape Structures Incorporated, and they have installed playgrounds for us at Cedar Mini Park, as well as Doran Gardens, so you might be familiar with their product. And the next one is Maryland Park. This is, this is a brand-new park currently under construction. We hope that it'll be open to the public before summer, long before summer, when the kids are out of school. This is the play structure that we'll be installing as part of the, the new park construction. This is an interesting structure because it addresses two to five, to the five-year-olds, but also has components for the older kids, between five and 12. That concludes my presentation. Oh, I should have mentioned that the, the play structures at Maryland are being provided by Playpower, and we have their products at New York and Dunsmore just recently installed, and we have been very, very happy with their service and their delivery and their quality of work in their installation. So we hope to continue that relationship with them.
I presume that national association allows us to get better prices by going through them?
Yes, that association is basically a competitive bidding process, so they vet out their contractors, and not only for qualifications, but also for their best pricing, and we take advantage of their relationship, and we piggyback on them.
We do more of that in the following years?
We'll be doing more of that, and I believe purchasing practice is that, that relationship and some of the other purchasing standards that we have in the city.
Okay, so I understand the entire NGPA pre-selection process, and how that, you know, economies of scale and all that, but here's what I'm trying to understand. Report states that both contractors are already pre-selected contractors, and therefore NGP, you know, there's no need to do the NGPA bidding process. Sounds like there are contractors other than these two contractors on that list that have already been pre-selected. So how do we know that one is appropriate for the, for the first one, and the second is appropriate for the second one? What I'm saying is, is it possible to take three pre-selected contractors and have them hold a beauty pageant and bring the price down for our residents?
That's a very good question, Councilmember Sananian. They don't have too many playground contractors on their list. However, what we do is based on our, as I indicated earlier, we have several inspectors on city staff, playground specialists that routinely get certified. They have extensive history with these contractors that work within the region. Many of them are not necessarily within the region, so many of these are coming from the East Coast, but they're local installers. So it's not just the product, it's also working with a local contractor. So working closely with our Public Works Maintenance staff, we have developed a relation with several playground contractors and installers to better understand their product, and our practice, the city's practice, has been to have a variety of structures, but at the same time, be able to maintain them at a consistent and uniform manner. So we're not necessarily just looking for creative opportunities, but also best pricing. So we're not necessarily just looking for creative opportunities, but also best pricing and maintainability. So those factor into the selection process, and again, internally, we solicit at, in this go-around, we solicit at four proposals, and they're all very competitive based on their relationship with NJPA. So it's not really based on the price, it's based on the quality of the product and the service they provide, because they're all compatible.
Okay, so, you look at the quality of what it is that they're going to provide, so that's one determining factor. You will look at the other contractors as to what they will provide before you make a determination?
Right. Many of the manufacturers have pre-certified contractors that are certified to install their products. So by nature of that relationship, we have to respect, if we want to go with a certain product, we work with their certified contractors.
Okay, and you said that it's not really a big list. How small is it? How many, and how many contractors are there?
I wish I had an answer for you on that, but I don't believe, I want to say it's no more than three or four per go-around, and it's a list that gets updated regularly, and that's the list that we piggyback on.
Okay, so these two would represent two out of three or four?
Right, and it doesn't mean that the others are working locally either.
Oh, so there's, that doesn't, okay.
So that has an impact on our selection process as well, and our familiarity with our product in the city.
Okay. I understand the explanation, and I just hope that whenever we come across these situations where we're looking at a short list of NGPA pre-approved contractors, we still try to get that edge to save whatever monies we can for our residents.
I understand.
Mrs. Friedman?
So I understand quality in terms of how well things are built and how they hold up, and I understand price. Do we ever look at with these, and I don't know if there's any kind of studies about what kids prefer the most in terms of different equipment?
We do, surprisingly. Internally, we do. Specifically for, of course, I don't have any slides, but specifically for Maple. Maple's playground is pretty interesting, and what we've, what we have tried to do as part of our improvement program, improvement project, is to augment some non-standard, off-the-shelf amenities that really engage kids. So we focus on designer products for those that we don't have to necessarily go with a off-the-shelf product. The off-the-shelf product is obviously very economical, because you're buying in mass, and, you know, it's been tested and certified. With Palmer Park, which we will be bringing that to you within the next month, redesign of several components on that park, we're doing the same, we're exercising the same design practice, where we're taking something that's off-the-shelf, but adding several amenities that are not typical and not unique, very unique to the site.
Mm-hmm.
And not only to Glendale, but also unique to the site.
Right, so I know kids certainly love all the old standards, and slides and swings are always going to be very popular, but when I've gone to playgrounds, and I see now in San Diego, and New York, and other places, these very unusual playground equipment, now, I don't know if they just look great to adults and kids don't care, but maybe they have things that, you know, kids do like, and if it's a question of a little bit of money, I would rather see the money spent, if we have it, on putting in something that's really amazing and that kids just go crazy for, and that's different, you know. So, from time to time, when these come up, and I know we've had these come in to us before, it would be great to get some of those alternative other types of equipments that maybe are new to us, but that are getting good reviews where they're being used. It would just be nice to see some different stuff around town so that parents have a choice of different parks that have different equipment, and, like you said, things that are site-specific. And I've seen some parks that have sort of nature features that kids can play in, you know, different types of plants, and explore plants that are, have different smells or different textures, and things like that, that maybe don't cost that much, are something I hope we think about as well in our parks.
We do, and you may recall that Maple Park had the rolling hills?
Yes.
Okay, and we have, I believe, a story circle that's purely for kids, not adults, that engages toddlers. It's off limits for older kids, it's purely toddler-focused, and a sand area at Palmer Park. And Maple, we also have this park-wide game where you identify elements, and at some point, it leads to the next element, to the next element. So we're able to accomplish things through our design efforts rather than off-the-shelf products.
That's great, glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one card. Mike Mohill, two minutes.
My name is Mike Mohill. I'm certainly happy that we are doing some equipment stuff for the parks. I have a couple of questions. Number one, what is the source of this money? Is it capital improvement from the city of Glendale? Is it grant money from the state, county, federal? I understand when I read the newspapers, that about 90% of this money comes from grants, not from the General Fund of the city. So where's all our money going to, if it's not going to parks? Ladies and gentlemen, it's the obvious place, it's the unfunded salaries and pensions of our citizens.
Stop it, stop it right there. You want to talk about this issue, talk about it, but don't weave it in to pensions and benefits. You do it every time, and I've warned you in the past, and I'm going to warn you again. You want to talk about this issue, then talk about it. Otherwise, you're done.
It's related, Mr. Weaver.
No, they're not. No, they're not. Uh-uh. This is your constant theme. Do you want to say something about this issue?
Sure.
Do you want the bicycle, do you want the playground equipment in, yes or no?
Of course I want the playground equipment in, but you know what? We can also have soccer fields in South Glendale. Why not? This is for teenage, this is for adults.
Look, I'm not going to get into, I'm not, wait, wait. I'm not going to get into a battering with you. These are about some playground equipment for young children. You said you want it. Okay, I heard one question. Where's the money coming from? When you're done, we'll get you an answer.
Okay. The thing about it is, I'm talking about, you know, I look at, I look at Glendale High School, and I look at Glendale College, and they have baseball and tennis right close to the, to Colorado Boulevard or Mountain Street, yet we can't have a soccer field at the adult recreational center.
There you go again.
Okay. I'd like to see some adult recreation for teenagers.
That's fine. Please don't stand here and campaign, okay? You want to talk about the kids, the young kids on this issue, then do so. You asked one question, we'll get you an answer.
Okay, let's talk about this, the source of the funding. Thank you.
No. Source of the funding. Where's the money coming from?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can I go back to that? Is it hard to?
I don't.
Because all the, I'd like to highlight the funding sources for all seven projects. They're not, there we go. Next to each of the seven park sites, the funding sources identified. New York, Verdugo, and Brand Park will be funded through capital improvement funds. The Maryland project, which was before you today, will be funded through Prop 84 grant. Dunsmore Park and, oh, I, that's an error right there. New York Park, I'm sorry, New York Park and Dunsmore are being funded out of Quimby funds, which are development impact fee funds. And the last two, Pacific and Palmer, are being funded through community development block grant funds.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Weaver, leave that up, please. Okay, so in plain language, the city of Glendale, through its developer impact fees, is funding the improvement in New York, Verdugo Park, and Dunsmore Park. Explain Quimby.
Quimby is a, another form of development impact fee. It's basically a subdivision. Mike could probably provide more.
Okay, so, no, that's good enough, another.
It's a city fund.
Another developer impact fee. We have Brand Park, also CIP, which means Capital Improvement, for those listening at home. And then Maryland Park, Prop 84 was a grant we applied for. That would have gone somewhere else in California in the event we didn't apply for it. And then finally, we have Pacific Park and Palmer Park. Those are funded by the community development block grants, and specifically, that is for low-income neighborhoods, impacted neighborhoods, and so we're using those federal allocations for those two parks. Makes perfect sense to me, sir.
I think you summarized it pretty good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move the item.
Second.
8A1 and 2, roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Taro?
Yes.
Saniano?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right, next, please.
Next item on the agenda, at 8B is Director of Finance Regarding Fiscal Year 2013-14's Second Quarter Financial Update. E1 is a motion to note and file the financial status report for the period ended December 31, 2013, including comments from the city council. E2 is a resolution amending the existing comprehensive citywide fee schedule for fiscal year 2013-14 regarding street use permit fees issued by Public Works Engineering Division.
Mr. Cho, this is Mr. Elliott tonight, isn't it?
We will tag-team it, but he goes first. How about that, Bob?
Hey, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, as we often or always do, bring you the mid-year update, first part of February every year. So as usual, we want to talk about how we're doing for this fiscal year. We'll touch on where we think we'll be towards the end of the fiscal year, give a little discussion on 14-15 and some of the issues that we're facing, and then we'll include the organizational profile items that we have presented in the past, and as kind of a cleanup issue, amend the fee schedule for the street use permit fee. So getting directly into the General Fund, this year, our revenues that we've received thus far this, through the first six months, is up compared to the same time last year, and I'll go through where we've adjusted those upwards, primarily from our property tax, sales tax, and our building permits, and I'll show you how that breaks down when we get to the numbers. They're trending up, which is a good sign. Our revenues are doing very well as we go throughout the year, which is nice to see. Expenditures, we're expended thus far this year $82 million, less than 50%, about 47% through the first part of this year compared to last year, where we were $81.4 million. So we're spending a little bit more this year than last year. You'll see the breakdown by department. Community Services and Parks is a little bit higher at mid-year, only because of the summer expenditures that they have. They tend to have, obviously, for summer programs, a lot more activity through the summer months. However, all that said, we're looking for the departments to be at budget or under as we move forward. So looking at the numbers, you can see the adopted budget, where we had our resources total of $170 million, that included using fund balance of about $2 million. We've adjusted our revenue estimates up in these different categories. Property tax, about $600,000, sales tax, about $320,000, license and permits, about $1,002, and that's kind of a sign of the building activity in Glendale. So we've upped that significantly to the tune of about $2 million. So our total revised revenue is at $170 million. We received about $51, and as, as you know, our revenues are not quite straight-lined. We don't get the, we get one payment of property tax in December, and the rest of it comes in April, so it's kind of skewed as we get it throughout the year. Expenditures by the General Fund departments, you can see where we are relative to the year. We've had some budget adjustments that council has approved, the largest in the Fire Department for additional overtime, and the Fire Academy. And in Management Services, we have the Lemley Project and our lobbyist, so that's the bulk of the adjustments. Non-departmental, those were transfers out to Information Systems for our Microsoft, negotiated contract with Microsoft, and that was $1.2 million. All that said, we're still at about 46.8%, well below the 50% mark for the given year. As we have done in the past, we report to you what our cash balances are from our major funds. You can see where we are through December. General Fund standing at about $43 million, Sewer Fund $64 million, Electric at $133, Water, which is where we're having a lot of focus and issues because of the rate structure. Our cash from operations is negative cash, negative $14 million. We do have bond funds, unspent bond funds. If you recall, we issued $35 million in debt earlier last year, so we have $27 million that's funding a multi-year capital improvement plan. All said and done with our major funds, we have $255 million on hand there. All our other minor funds, the capital projects, so on and so forth, and the different fund categories, another $200 million, total cash of about $460 million. So where does this leave us as we move through the end of the year? As we have adjusted our forecast in terms of revenue expenditures, we're looking, forecasting about expenditures of about $169 million against revenues of about $170. So that'll give us a projected surplus of about $1.4 million as we move into the end of the year. What does that leave us in terms of our fund balance? As you know, our floor is 30%. We have a target of 35. This projection would put us with the $1,004, adding to our current balance from last year, would end the year with a projected fund balance of about $61.7 million, or 36.2%. Still a very healthy fund balance. Some of the upcoming challenges we have as we, as we look forward to 14-15 is obviously PERS rates. PERS is trying to recapture their investment loss from several years ago, so they've embarked on a rather aggressive rate increase over the next five years, which we are building into our forecasts. Rising medical costs, you know, our, we haven't got our final rates for 14-15 yet. Keenan, our broker, has said anywhere 10% to 12% in terms of rate increases. Some of that is due to just natural cost increases, but some is for the Affordable Care Act. Workers' compensation, we're still trying to recover from the deficit we have in that fund. As you recall, we had up to over $20 million deficit. We worked it down, we're less than $17 million now, so we're making progress. We've actually got the liability fund back in the black, so we are making progress in some of these funds that we've had deficits for, claims amounts, and so on and so forth. CIP, we have very limited funding, as you know, and we'll discuss it in detail during the budget process, where we are with capital funding, but it's quite a bit less than what we had years ago, where a lot of the sales tax went in there. And then, just looking at our, how we fund moving forward, our information technology and some of our other support departments, and such as Fleet, and so on and so forth. So those are some of the challenges that we're looking at. We are doing a lot of reviewing and questioning how we do business, and I think we'll bring to you hopefully some solutions during the budget process. With that, I will turn it to Scott.
Just very quickly, because every now and again, maybe too often, you get folks who come up, a very small handful of folks who will come up and act as though they're telling you something that you don't know or something you don't want to hear, when in fact, you, the city council, you, the board of directors for this corporation, have to confront those brutal facts on a weekly, and certainly a quarterly and annual basis through our budget. And so you know this information, but we continue to show this information to make sure that we condition ourselves to focus on those hard realities as to how our business is doing, and it is a business, it's a business of government. We try to do it as effectively and efficiently as anybody, certainly pound-for-pound, I would put us against anybody in this state and even in this nation. We do keep score, and the scoreboard is what it is, and that tells us how we're doing. So we look at things as we compare information and analysis with other places. We look at what the total population is, we look at per capita figures, trends, and what have you, moving on. You've seen this information, you see how the per capita budget is moving in a certain direction, but when you see the number of residents that are served, both on an FTE basis and in the General Fund, we, on the overall city, we're shrinking the number of employees, and so each employee has more residents that they are providing that service to. Again, just a snapshot of information, no one indicator tells you everything, but you look at it as a mosaic of information, and that's important to you as a city council, as you try to understand how the business is moving. When you look at the way that we spend money, and public safety, just breaking down all of our departments, 15 different departments, but really into five different program areas, public safety, public works, utilities- Public safety, public works, utilities, and transit, which is basically all of our infrastructure, community development planning, quality of life, your soft services, parks, libraries, and what have you, and then internal service and administration. You see that we are very consistent as we move across, and we do move some money back from restricted budgets to the general fund, but generally speaking, we have, again, been very consistent as we have stripped down this organization, cutting more than $30 million in the general fund over the last several years. We look at things like our overall costs, our overall percentage of cost that is dedicated to personnel. We are a service industry, a service business. We do not make widgets, and so one of the large cost drivers, especially in the general fund, the single large cost driver, is our people. And what you see on an organization-wide profile is that our percentage is actually going in the right direction. While the cost per employee is going up because of the PERS pressures that Bob mentioned, we're still driving down the overall cost, and that's a credit to the council certainly, but it's also a credit to the employees and our partners and the employee groups that continue to take on more of the cost of their own employment. As you see, change year over year, we continue in real time dropping those numbers. When you look at just the general fund, this -- and I'm sorry, go back here. Our target that the council's adopted is 35 percent of expenditure being dedicated to all personnel costs, and we exceed that by a couple of percent by dropping that number down to 33 percent. When you look at the city's general fund, our target is 75. We're not there yet. We have pushed it down to 78, almost 79 percent, but you can see where we were in previous years. We were in 11, 12, well north of 80 percent. So, we are going the right direction, and you can see as we continue to drop the number of employees, the number of full-time bodies that are doing the work. And when you look at our performance indicators that are part of the quarterly reports, you can see that we're still hitting on all of our deliverables to the community and all of our stakeholders. We're also very streamlined. We've dropped, we've accepted and ratcheted down our target for management. What percentage of these personnel costs are going towards management? In other words, we want to have as streamlined and trim a management structure as possible. We had originally started off at 25 percent. The council adopted a much more stringent 20 percent in this last year, and we are meeting that, keeping management at less than 20 percent, actually hitting 19 percent as a management salary ratio.
And by the way, does that include technical personnel who are -- I mean, I'm told in some cities, technical personnel are not considered management, but here they are. So, they still exist there, and they still get paid the same amount, but they don't fall -- they don't get classified as management, so they don't fall -- so those cities can have a lower number of managers.
It is very difficult to look at other places and go apples to apples, so we have taken a kind of more of a universal approach and just on our own decided, everybody who has some level of supervision isn't necessarily a manager. And so, we wouldn't artificially pump up those numbers just to make ourselves look good comparison to other folks. We really stripped it down to those people that would be managing people and programs. And so, it really is a much more apples-to-apples comparison today than it ever was before. I think the proof's in the pudding in terms of when you look at the number of full-time employees that we have, we're down to 1,588. In this current fiscal year, we have not been that low since the mid-1990s, yet we're doing much, much more work. This is the challenge that we have. Again, our cost is our people, and because of the PERS cost, you see what the benefit load is. When you look at 11, 12 for safety, non-safety, 12, 13, safety, non-safety, 13, 14, you can see that this number, which compares to 59 percent, compares to the 64, and you see it kind of leveling off at the 63. For every dollar that we spend, we're spending 63 cents, almost 64 cents, on the benefit load, and generally speaking, that's going to be here in retirement. As Bob had indicated, PERS is trying to recoup as much of their losses in as short a amount of time as possible. That's good and it's bad. It hurts in the short term because we're making up for their short-sighted investments, but on the flip side, it does shrink that horizon so they get well sooner, and thus the city and our operations get well sooner. And you see it across both safety and non-safety. Again, this is information the council sees on an annual and semi-annual basis, and it's nothing new. These are the challenges that you've been wrestling with.
So, Cho, are we projecting about 2020 should be leveled?
Everything that -- yes, sir, everything that PERS is showing us, that five-year recapture, instead of a 10-year smoothing, they're trying to push it into five by the end of fiscal year 19, it is leveling off, and we're looking very good in that period of time. I have to say, though, that's greatly aided by the amount of cost that's been picked up by our employees at all levels and across all strata of the organization and all of our bargaining groups. They've picked up and increased costs of their own employment, more so than any other city that I'm aware of in California, let alone Los Angeles.
It's just too bad that PERS was so mismanaged for a number of years in there, giving misleading information to cities and counties throughout the state. Looks like they have their act straightened out now, but we've just got to weather the storm.
I think they're just looking, they're taking that hard medicine. But you can see, even going back to the early 1980s, higher rates at PERS were something that they were dealing with then at 36 percent. The 39-year average is 22, almost 23 percent. This year here, we are at 13, 14, we're at 30 and 30, almost 32 percent. We will top out at that 45 level, is the 45 and a half, 45.5 percent projection, but you can see that the key is here that the growth is minimal, and then as the actuarial tables kick in and frankly, folks start to die off, those numbers go down, the PERS members, and those rates will start to come down because the City Council has already enacted a two-tiered system to protect the long-term benefits to the city of Glendale, and because of the cost sharing, you're also getting the short-term benefit. In terms of where we are, money comes from, you know this, our property tax on a -- for the general fund, when we look per capita, we're getting less of the property tax than any of our neighbors that many folks compare us to because we get 13 and a half cents on the dollar. That was locked in time back in 1978 under Prop 13, and Burbank and Pasadena were cities that had a much higher share of their property tax, and that was locked in time. Glendale is 85, more than 80 percent, I believe, almost 85 percent residential by landmass or hillside, nonusable, and that means that we have very few areas to do sales tax generating businesses, retail businesses, whereas Burbank and Pasadena with larger industrial areas and commercial areas, they can do a little bit more there because it's generally all the same sales tax. Utility user tax is something that's been -- that has splashed lately. And in fact, here, per capita, we're pulling in $140 in UUT versus 202 for our neighbors on either side. And it's also worth noting that the UUT was reaffirmed not five years ago by an overwhelming majority. And then, lastly, TOT is something that we're really focused on, Transit Occupancy Tax, trying to boost that. You can see that it really, it's a function of the lack of hotel rooms, but as part of your economic development program, we are trying to get to that, to more hotel rooms.
Cho, that slide is so important because I'm reading and hearing residents of this community think they're overtaxed now, and if they don't understand, they're just looking at their own bill, not looking in comparison to anybody else. They don't see the big picture. I know it's very difficult for them to get to that point, to understand. That points it out very graphically where we are. Every study, the Cosmont reports I looked at years ago, showed this city was lower in our total taxation than any other city around.
Historically, Glendale was a very conservative town, and it was a low-tax town, and when the largest chunk of that tax, being property tax, was locked in by Prop 13, the good news is that we've been very, very competitive. The bad news is that it hamstrings our ability to pay for services that residents want. The street use permit fee that is there, we're asking for an amendment. One thing that we've come across is that the street use permit is open-ended today, so any project that requires the use of streets, either for locking out a portion of the street or staging in the street or intermittent traffic control, we are charging an ongoing fee, and in fact, we should be capping that fee. We are approaching sizable amounts that we've collected from a number of the businesses, a number of the developments that are here in town, and at this point, I think it's the most prudent thing is to limit how much we can collect in a year for fear of collecting too much and having the fee challenged. And so, we are recommending that we amend that to not exceed and capping it at $100,000 on an annual basis or a rolling 12-month period. Very quickly, that's your mid-year budget report. A number of our directors are here in the audience if you have any specific questions for us, and if not, the motions are there in your staff report.
Any questions for my colleagues? I do have one speaker request. Little Speaker, this is AB2, William Hooper. This is the topic you wanted, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is William Hooper, and I live and work in Glendale. I would respectfully ask the council, before it adopts the resolution, to get the answers to just a few more questions about the street use permit fee into the public record. First, how much revenue is the city likely to forego by making this change, assuming, of course, the fee was not challenged? And how often in recent years have there been these street use fees of more than $100,000? What were the amounts and who paid them? I work on Brand Boulevard, and I walk and drive downtown almost every day, so I know just what it means to have the traffic lanes and sidewalks blocked and closed, and I'm concerned that this change could be interpreted as serving some fairly narrow private interests like large real estate developers and their construction contractors at the expense of everyone else in Glendale, who must bear the traffic congestion and loss of access to sidewalks and other hazards and inconveniences of prolonged street closures. And as I see it, there's an important reason to have fees that are proportionate to the area and time used without a limit or cap, and that's to give those who would use the public space for their private business a strong economic incentive to do so in ways that impose the least burden on the public. And I would urge the council to keep them motivated, to do their work in the most efficient way possible, and then to get out of the way. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Staff, like a question?
No, that's actually a very good and fair point made by Mr. Hooper. The item that you had before, you really does speak to a number of the development projects in downtown and in the South Anchor area. The problem that we have, and certainly the point that I think was made and a term that was used, is that these fees cannot be used as punitive measures against the development community. They have to tie it back to a cost for a service, or they run the risk of being classified as something other than a fee. At this point, if the fee is open-ended and many of these projects will take a 14- to 18-month construction period, there is not the clearest nexus, you could argue, between what we are charging and collecting and what is being, the benefit that is being derived or the inconvenience being put out to the areas surrounding a given project. So, the issue before us is to say, well, if we have a project, we have a number of public works, traffic, and transit impacts, we believe that the $100,000 limit is something that recoups a good deal in good faith from the private interest for the benefit of the public, but it is exceedingly difficult to draw that nexus. We have several projects in and around downtown and in the South Anchor area, the Triangle Project, for example, that I want to say a small handful of them have either reached or will soon exceed the $100,000 limit or cap that's being proposed. Several others, as you know, that have not yet started construction or have, or will soon, or just recently got underway, they obviously are nowhere near that impact.
Mr. Mayor. So, I mean, the gentleman brings up really good points, and your answer explains some of that, but it just leads to the question of, well, how do you judge those impacts? How do you put any price on those impacts? Because we have some costs. We have to have our public works people or traffic people come out and do mitigation, correct? We have to put cones up. We have to direct traffic, perhaps. And then, you have the impact on the public, lost time, inconvenience, which I think would be much harder, but how do you even get to the $100,000? I mean, how do, why is it 100? Why not 200? Why not 50? How do, what comes under that equation?
Therein lies the problem that we have. We can charge to recoup our cost as the city, to the extent that we will have the Public Works Department or transit folks or the utility folks go out and do some work, to the extent that it's intermittent, to the extent that we have a developer or a development team doing a good deal of the traffic control themselves or laying out the cones themselves, and we would do inspection, but we're already getting paid for the inspection fee as it is.
You're saying that it's not costing us more than $100,000 in any case in staff time to deal with any of these projects, any of the traffic above what they've already paid in their fee?
Because they're paying other fees, it's difficult to draw that nexus for us.
Then what if they, their trucks destroy the roads? Does that come into this?
Not into this particular fee. We have other types of means of recouping any kind of loss from the city for damage to the public right-of-way, damage to public infrastructure, and therein lies part of the problem, is we have a number of other fees that will protect the city's interest. This is one that is intended to compensate the city for the use of the public right-of-way for a period of time while a project is being completed.
So, let me ask.
But if I can, just to finish that point, therein lies, that lies the problem, is to what, what are you tying that dollar figure back to?
Well, that's my question. So, just because we're limiting it to $100,000, why does that mean that someone won't challenge that number if we don't have?
If I may, if I may, just, I want to make sure that the record is clear. A street use permit fee such as this is a fee to use essentially government property, which we absolutely have the right to do as long as that fee is reasonable. It's different than a water rate or electric charge where you have to show the actual nexus to the thing. It's not, it's not that type of nexus that you have to show. But in any event, with this type of fee, you want to make sure, the fee has to be reasonable and can't be an amount that's exorbitant, and I think in setting the amount at this amount, it's trying to balance, balance our right to either lease or allow people to use our right-of-way or other public space with the need to have a balanced fee that's not so exorbitant that a court might find it to be unconscionable or exorbitant.
Okay, that clarifies things a lot for me. So, in your opinion, having it capped at this amount is something that if we were taken to court, we were able to, we'd be able to say, we do have a cap to make sure it's reasonable, whereas in the past, we didn't have a cap, so it could, I assume, kind of go up indefinitely, which a court would say, that's not reasonable.
That's correct, and I will say, though, there's a certain amount of balancing, policy balancing that the council's doing as well. It's not strictly a legal question, and I think that the opinion that the city manager and Director of Public Works has is this is a reasonable balance between the two.
And to help punctuate the point, as part of your upcoming budget, when we do the fee study, this particular item, as opposed to just increasing the fee, would be studied as a separate amount because theoretically, it could go down or it could even go up, but the notion of having it open-ended, I think, is a liability to us.
So, we could revisit the amount if we decided that there was so much impact going on that the fee should be higher? But this is sort of a number that's not arbitrary, but it's something that you think makes sense, but having no cap doesn't make sense?
That's correct.
Okay, now I understand a little bit more about where that number comes from. And I do thank the gentleman for coming because he makes excellent points. To me, it sounds not like the city's trying to kowtow to private interests, but to actually protect this fee so that we can continue to receive it, so I will support it.
Any more comments? Is there a motion? On one, B1 first to note and file.
I'll move the item.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Njorian?
Wintaro?
Yes.
Nanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right. B2. Is it second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Njorian?
Wintaro?
Yes.
Nanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right. Okay, now to the big one.
Item C on the agenda is Director of Finance regarding review of the City of Glendale ballot measure feasibility issue survey conducted by Sorrel Associates, Inc. C1 is a motion to note and file a report.
Mr. George.
We are going to platoon this presentation, sir, and I'll start it, and we will have our consultants from Sorrel come forward and make a rather detailed presentation, as this is something that has been talked about a great deal and had been considered by the City Council over these past several months. So, with no further ado, looking at the--
Mr. Cho, one thing.
Yes, sir.
It's been suggested that we hold questions to the end of this presentation.
That would allow us to get through the meat of the material as quickly as possible, sir.
Folks, if you haven't looked, there's 71 slides here, so--
We can accelerate or decelerate further, council.
You can accelerate for me. I've already been briefed and seen it.
Seventy-one of yours and then 100 of theirs?
No, it's all together.
Oh.
It's all together. We'll give you a brief context as to why this issue is before you and talk about the different surveys that had come before, the ballot measure project, and then Sorrel will do their presentation. We'll talk about the next steps. As you recall, Mr. Manukian moved from City Council. He was elected to the treasure spot that opened up a vacancy on the council. Mr. Quintero has graciously agreed to stay on until we have the special election, which is this June, and with the advent of a special election-- is this June, and with the advent of a special election, we are poised to have an opportunity, since we're paying for the election anyway, to ask questions about how our residents and stakeholders feel.
I don't know if he was gracious about it.
He's always very gracious, sir. We, as part of our normal evaluation, have the citizen satisfaction survey done by the Rose Institute this past summer, and in that, in that survey, the Rose Institute uncovered, in their statistically valid random sample survey, that while people were very, very happy to live in Glendale, thought that the city council was headed in the right direction, that they could be at the end, as the ed of the recession was felt, could be willing to pay more for more service, although it was open-ended and no questions were ever asked, as to how much would you be willing to pay. But, that being said, when you look at the 85% of the residents that were satisfied, or very satisfied with the operation of the city, and then couch that with more than three-quarters of the residents, 79% saying that, the respondents, that were willing to pay more to get more service, these factors, with the confluence of the special election, led us to the point of asking the question, well, should we actually move forward as part of the special election with a ballot measure, that would address some of Glendale's challenges? As you've heard Mr. Elliott and myself say almost ad nauseam, we are operationally balanced. We can continue to move along on the trajectory that we're on, but my fear, and certainly I think your fear, is that if we don't address some of our structural issues, that we could begin to lose our footing as a leader among cities. That also means that we have to keep pace with the labor market, and understanding that people cost, good people cost a little bit more, in terms of providing that level of service, because we are a service industry. We look at the quality of life services that were cut dramatically, because I think it's only common sense and human nature, that in the pantheon or the hierarchy of issues and wants and needs, people want to be safe, people want infrastructure, and then those quality of life services come into play, and as you prioritize, oftentimes, those are the services that get cut. And that is what happened here in Glendale over these last several years. When you look at police and fire calls, I think we're getting full value for our police department, we were ranked number one as the safest mid-sized city in the entire country recently, and we have a Class One Fire Department that yields benefits to our property owners vis-à-vis their proper, or their property insurance rates. But the idea being that other folks, independent and objective, are looking at our operations and saying, you are getting value. That said, the call loads continue to increase. So, beginning in November, the council had given us the authorization to solicit interest, and so in December, the council approved the retention of the Sorrel team to come in and provide some insight to us to see, if we were actually going to chase a ballot measure in the special election, June of 14, then we needed to do so in an intelligent, educated fashion, that meant surveying the public with more precision and greater detail than was done in the Rose Institute survey. So, we did an RFP, Sorrel was selected as the best partner for us, and as part of their team, Fairbank, Maslin, Mullen, Metz &amp; Associates, I W Group, High Media Agency, also were able to come onboard and help us with this effort. We crafted three different items to test with the public. One was a transit occupancy tax increase. Today, the TOT, or bed tax, as it's known, on hotels and motels, is something that most every city has, and in fact, many cities, especially the surrounding cities, have TOT rates well in excess of the 10% that we charge. With the state's dissolution of redevelopment and no real funding source for economic development, we believed that increasing from 10% to 12% on the hotels and motels for folks who were coming and visiting Glendale for business or pleasure, could help us raise about $750,000 to fund economic development. The other item, the other two items, one was a EMS or paramedic tax, and it would be a tax that would take the place of the $5 a month subscription program that we have, that we have a great deal of support for in the community, but this would be universal, every household would pay it at $4 a month, and essentially, that would mean that no home, no household in Glendale would receive a bill from the Glendale Fire Department for paramedic services rendered. And that's important, because, as you know, the bulk of our param, or bulk of our fire calls are indeed paramedic EMS. In fact, it's increased 5% from 80% to 85% over the last several years. Lastly, as I referenced earlier, quality of life services took a beating in the recession, you've heard folks talk about the need to replace park equipment, wanting to do more programming for the youth, for the elderly, wanting to make sure that library hours are available, that there's quality programming and technology in the libraries, and that means that we would actually augment those programs above what they are now at the bare-bones level. So we would do a quality of life tax. And again, I'm very careful to use the term "tax," these would be taxes. People oftentimes claim and decry different types of revenues that come into cities as taxes, and they are not. These would be taxes, and in California, only the voters can levy that tax. So, with that, let me bring up the Sorrel team, they have an exhaustive presentation. I think it's important for the council to know the detail and the expertise that goes into this, and then we'll finish up after they're finished.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, honorable members of the council, on behalf of the entire Sorrel team, which Scott listed in his brief presentation, thank you for this opportunity to present to you.
And if you see us yawning, that'll be a sign.
I'm on it, thank you, though. Speaking of which, we're going to be very brief with our presentation, I'm going to hand it over to Rick from FM3 to go through some of the details, but the top-line overview is that, even with the cost-cutting measures that this city enacted during the Great Recession, with the employee cuts, and with the cuts to the general fund, voters are still overwhelmingly satisfied with the services that they're receiving from the city, as well as the city in general. Those positive views have pretty much prevented them from seeing the need for revenue right now, to help you solve some of the structural issues that the city manager brought up, long-term. Rick's going to go through, and we're going to skip some slides to keep this as brief as possible, but we're more than happy to answer questions, but you'll be able to see where people stand on each of the three measures tested, as well as, we're more than happy to provide information on a geographic, demographic, age breakdown as well. And the one thing that we really want to communicate to you is that, while we are not in a position to move forward with a revenue measure on the June 2014 measure at this time, based on the support levels that we see, the wealth of information that you're getting from this poll, about how the city feels about certain city departments, city services, and what they see as concerns in the community, can really help guide your budgeting process, as well as your future communications efforts going forward. So with that, I'd like to hand it off to Rick.
Thank you, Brandon. As Brandon mentioned, I'm from Fairbank, Maslin, Mullen, Metz &amp; Associates, the public opinion research firm, and I'm going to do my best to get through these slides in a timely manner, keep all of you awake, so with that, I'm going to get started. And I just, before I start getting into the actual data, want to give a rundown of the methodology, because I think that's important here. So the survey was conducted by telephone in the early part of January, we contacted people by landline and cell phones, very concerned about that issue, as we transition to a more cellphone-dominant society. But that third bullet point, 501 randomly-selected City of Glendale registered voters, who are likely to vote in the June 2014 special election in the city, but the statewide primary election. And I just want to bring that to your attention, because that is a segment of your population, as opposed to the Rose survey that you did, which was all residents. It's a very different look at your population, all community members versus people who are likely to vote in a specific election, that is going to actually be pretty low turnout in, if you compare it to November 14, or even November 2012, the presidential election. So it's a, it's a slice of your community, as opposed to the whole community. And just the margin of error for the survey, at 4.4%, plus or minus. And then finally, we did the survey, not only in English, but in Spanish, Armenian, both dialects, eastern and western, Korean and Tagalog, to make sure the entire community, anyone we called of these voters, had the opportunity to participate in a language they were most comfortable in doing so. Okay, so let me try to make sure I get to the slides, and this is the first slide that we're going to talk about, in terms of just testing the ballot measures. And I want to start here and just give you a sense. So we tested three ballot measures, as the city manager noted. And on the slide you're seeing here is actually the text of one of those measures. This is the Community Services, Libraries, Parks and Community Services measure, and this 75-word statement approximates what could potentially be on the ballot someday. When you go in, you read that measure, you see what it is, and you're asked to vote. And that's the language respondents heard over the telephone. We asked people, how would you vote if the election were today, and that, and that measure were on the ballot? Here you can see, of the respondents, a total of 44% say they would vote in favor of that measure, but you can see the sort of gradation of support, definitely, probably. On the other side, 46% said no, 10% undecided. Clearly, we're talking about a measure that requires two-thirds support, falling well short of that. After we asked that question, we followed it up in saying, well, what if this measure, was it a dollar amount, as opposed to, I should flip back, just so you can see, we tested it at $95 initially. And so when we then asked, well, what if it was 75, 55, or $35, you can see support starts to increase marginally, and we get to a majority of 53% at the $35 range. But again, well short of the two-thirds requirement needed to pass this measure. So, you can see, or sort of, at that, that ballot measure doesn't necessarily have the feasibility at this time. I'm going to, again, skip ahead a little. We tested two other types of ballot measures, as the city manager laid out. One was the EMS fee, the $4 monthly household measure, and the other was the increase in the transient occupancy tax, bed tax. And on the left side of the screen, you can see 50% supported the EMS ballot measure, 42% opposed. On the right side, 60% supported raising the TOT by 2%, 29% opposed. Again, we're a little stronger support, but still short of that two-thirds margin. And in this compressed timeline, where if you had been recommended going to the ballot, we would say that, with the shrunken timeline, that you would have to act relatively soon to put this on the ballot, to be eligible for the June election, there just was not time for the city to prepare, take action, and do the steps necessary to get this all sort of ducks in a row, to make sure you were in the right place at the right time. So that this June election was not the right time to put these measures on the ballot. So, sort of, want to skip ahead now and get to some of the reasons why, what's going on in the city? So I'll sort of start here and just give you a sense of, well, what is the cause of some of this sentiment? And what, one of the questions we ask in a lot of our surveys, we do this kind of research for cities throughout the state of California, in Los Angeles County, do you think there's a need for funding in the City of Glendale, to provide the services that residents use? And here you can see, a narrow majority, 54%, say there is a great or some need, but just 19% say that need is great. And what we often find in these surveys is, if people are not saying there's a great need to a certain extent, they will not likely support a tax increase of various kinds. And so you're seeing, you're falling well short of that two-thirds level, at the great and some need, and that sort of leads into why they are not necessarily supporting these ballot measures at the rate you would need to support, to pass the measure. So again, I'm going to skip a little, try to get through some of this stuff, so you can get through me quickly, and not fall asleep. But that, in effect, as Brandon said, sort of sets the stage for, they don't see the need, well, why? Because 86% think this city is an excellent or good place to live, there's not a concern here. If you asked this question in different communities, you would see very different numbers. This, I can tell you from doing research in other communities, asking this type of question, is not the norm. This is much higher, much stronger than you would see in a lot of communities across the state, and particularly in Los Angeles County. To have more than a third say excellent is a pretty robust number. Additionally, support for city government, the city council, the city government, the city staff, is exceptionally high as well. Two-thirds saying that city government is doing an excellent or good job. In fact, fewer than 10%, 8% are saying, poor job. We combine fair here with the poor, but really, fair is not the same thing as poor. So you have most people here happy with the job city government is doing. Again, as Brandon mentioned up front, there's not a perception of need, there's not a crisis going on here, everything's running as it should. So things are moving in the right way. Then, I'll skip ahead a little more, I think I missed the slide, I got to go back. Okay, so some of the context of why, of what's going on. So what are the problems people here in Glendale are concerned about, these voters, we're talking specifically? And not surprisingly, traffic congestion is at the top of the list, and that's no different here in Glendale, and the rest of LA County traffic, one of the major issues that drives us all crazy. But you can also see issues related to GWP charges, whether it be for electricity or water, that's a top concern. Mr. Mayor, you spoke about sense of taxes people have to pay, you can see, that's one of the top, on the top of the list. 57% say it's a very, or somewhat serious problem. And again, this is a reflection of awareness, what do I pay versus somebody else pays? But people in and of themselves, almost six in 10, saying that's a serious concern to them. But as we go down the list, you can see, a lot of these things that people are concerned about are not necessarily services, the things happening with city government, and in fact, you have to skip to the next slide and work your way from the bottom, the least important, or least concerning issues are what are, these ballot measures are intended to address. People are not concerned about the 911 times of the Police and Fire Department, people are less, very little concerned about recreational programs, the availability of libraries. So there's not, again, without the sense that these are big concerns, these ballot measures aren't inherently perceived as needs, and people think things are running smoothly, think things are headed in the right direction. So, I hope I got through all of this, and you're all still awake, and we can continue to answer more questions, as you have to.
Oh, is that it, or?
We tried to go as brief as we could, and you get it?
No, 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 I mean, did you have?
Oh, there's, there's a little bit more to kind of put it in context.
I didn't want to interrupt to you, done.
And just before we hand it back over to Scott, as I mentioned at the beginning, even with the cuts that you guys enacted, city residents, voters, are still extremely satisfied with things, and that's really a testament to this council, senior management, and all of your employees. I think what this information really calls for is an enhancement of your ongoing communications. As the city manager mentioned, you were recently named number one of mid-sized cities when it comes to public safety, I think is what you said. Those type of positive messages are fantastic, and should be, continue to be communicated to the community. At the same time, some of your long-term structural challenges that you'll be facing need to also be communicated to the community. I believe that is what the city manager will be doing as soon as I stop talking, so that you can have an ongoing discussion, ongoing dialogue, so that the voting population will be prepared to make the choice of whether or not to support additional revenue down the road, or accept service cuts. We're happy to hand it back to the city manager, and we'll be available after his presentation for any questions.
You could make a compelling argument, that one of the reasons why the state of California was able to get its tax measure through was because they were able to hold up the specter of insolvency as a very real threat, and when people saw that the wheels might just come off, they were willing to pay a bit more. Glendale can't make that, that claim, and wouldn't make that claim, because in fact, the wheels aren't coming off. As I say, we're operationally balanced. By being prudent, by being fiscally conservative, we're able to keep the operation moving in a positive direction. What that means, however, is that we can do little else than what we're doing right now, because we've cut the organization down to the bare minimum. Here is what we look at in terms of our general fund resources and appropriations. The general fund's about $170 million. In any full-service city, you're going to find that two-thirds of your general fund goes towards public safety, and what you saw in the, in the Sorrel and FM3 report, is that folks, when you ask them, what are you willing to cut, the thing that they're not willing to cut is public safety. So, in terms of finding new opportunities in your budget that don't hit public safety, the, the equation becomes, you know, rather short. When you look at where we get our money, the biggest chunk is going to be property taxes, sales taxes, then utility user taxes, and a lot's been made of utility user taxes. Utility user tax at $27 million is about 16 and a half percent, a little over 16%, I'm sorry, of our general fund, $27 million. If you eliminated UUT, you'd have to eliminate the entire library budget, the entire parks and community services budget, and all of the community development department, that's the portion that's housed in the general fund. And yet again, when you look back at the Sorrel FM3 report, you see that folks are very happy with the services that they are being provided. But again, you look at how we spend our money, police, fire, public works, CDD, CSP libraries, and then internal administration, and you see how we get our money. And the calculus is rather clear. What we show you here is that, again, we are operationally budget, we are operationally balanced, where the appropriations and the revenues mirror one another, where you see some of the discrepancies here is where some of the discrepancies here is where we're using fund balance, or we have carryovers, or if there's a capital project that might be included inside of that general fund budget. But the point being that those lines run together. This shows you graphically what we're talking about. The yellow area is actually all of our baseline costs, and we're looking at it from 2014 all the way to 2020, fiscal year 2020. The area up here is the issue for us. If this, if we were running around with our hair on fire, saying that the city was in grave fiscal danger, we would be, we would have much more of these unfunded areas over in the larger portion of our operations. That's not the case. And therein lies the difficulty and the story that we tell to our residents and stakeholders in terms of the revenue that's needed for the services that are provided. So let's take a look at that a little bit more pronounced, in terms of what the difficulty is. Because here, we're dealing basically with the margins. We can operate the bulk of the organization, the operations, on a day-to-day basis. It's the margins where we've had to cut back so far, our margins are very, very thin. So when we look here, all this number here is, it's just in scale, shows you this area up here, okay? So this is all of our appropriations, increased conservatively over the next five years, based on our historical increases in the past. This does not include any increase at this point in time for any compensation, any salary, any personnel beyond that which has already been negotiated essentially with GFD, GFFA, rather. So, when you look at our baseline costs, plus the PERS cost that we've been talking about tonight, this is what we expect to have happen with PERS rates. When you levy in, or layer in, an increase in CIP, again, this is, we're talking structural balance. We, right now, for a couple of years, over three years ago, we weren't putting any money into CIP. We've gotten back to the point where we are putting 1%, and soon we'll be putting 2%, and 3%, and 4% under these projections of our general, of our sales tax dollars into CIP to fund capital improvements that are not grant-funded. And you can see that here represented on this top layer. When you consider our internal service funds, workers' comp fund, which has a deficit, we are working to erase that deficit, fleet maintenance and fleet purchases, and information technology in our organization, that's this area leveled on, or layered on here. And then finally, other post-employment benefits. As you know, GASV 45 is requiring not only that we have to list on those OPEB liabilities on our balance sheet, you have been aware of that from previous budget discussions, and we need to establish a trust and start to put money in there to cover the cost of the impact that exists from our OPEB liability, basically allowing retirees to buy insurance through our program, as opposed to decoupling them from the city entirely. So these are all those margins that we showed you at the beginning. Now, let's take a look at revenue. This is revenue from where we are projected to be in 2014, 15, with a modest 2.4% growth over these next four years. Conservative, but not pessimistic. Again, it reflects where we've been over the last several years, last five to 10 years, as a matter of fact. So you see within that revenue forecast how we compare with costs. With that revenue forecast, with the assumptions under our baseline expenditures, we can cover our costs. We can cover our PERS increases. We can cover the CIP increases over time, that way we're putting money into our facilities and our capital. Where the line jumps is on those internal service funds. And when you layer on OPEB, it goes just a bit further. So again, you can see how our costs are layered, one on top of the other. And when you consider, again, that we can fund our operations, but it's those marginal increases in what our costs are, that's the pressure that we're under. But that doesn't make for a compelling story. As the Sorrel folks advised you, we aren't saying, and wouldn't say, and can't say, and shame on us, that we did say that the house is burning down, because it's not. When you look, then, at this line, these are all of those costs, this is the revenue number. So we need 4.4% revenue growth per year to cover those costs. Now, earlier today, in the successor agency, the agency, the city council, approved the ROPS schedule that included the repayment, the commencement of the repayment of the city's loan with the redevelopment agency. As you recall, before the end of redevelopment, the city had been getting, had been paid $7 million a year from the redevelopment agency. Decades ago, the city lent the redevelopment agency, fledgling redevelopment agency, tens of millions of dollars, and the agency had begun to pay that back, to the tune of $7 million a year. When the state dissolved the redevelopment agencies, they dissolved the $7 million loan repayment. The carrot and stick is that the state said, "If you do all the things that we're asking you to do to wind down your redevelopment agency, we'll allow you to start repaying yourself." So what we're showing is that, now that we have the certificate of compliance with the state, we've played ball with the Department of Finance, we will start to get $1.2 million, escalating up to about $5.5 million of repayment, provided that the state doesn't change the rules again. But the idea being, that makes an awfully big dent in what that unfunded cost could be. So with the agency loan repayment, and it's worth noting, we were getting $7 million back before, at the maximum, we're gonna get $5.5 million a year back, and have to sing for a supper, no less. But still, it's better than that sharp stick in the eye. So the idea here is that we would need about 1.8% growth on top of our anticipated growth numbers. That is a much more manageable challenge for us. Here is that same information represented just in a chart form, where you see our baseline costs increasing on a prudent level, and you can see the PERS costs, 1.5%, 3.6%, 5.4%, all the way up to 9.4%. Again, the key here is in 19 and 20, these costs level off. CIP, you see that we're increasing that. That basically translates into more investment into our capital for the replenishment of facilities, repairing parks, and everything else that goes along that would not be grant-funded. ISFs, workers' comp, fleet maintenance, and ISD. OPEB liability, $800,000, going up to about $3.5 million. You can see the total appropriations and what the surplus or deficit is anticipated to be. Again, no surprise to the council, you saw this over the last couple of budgets. This number obviously gets much clearer when you add in the loan repayment, $1 million, 5.2, going up to 5.5. And so you see what happens with the deficit and surplus. Again, by 19 and 20, we're turning, we're back into the black on an annual basis, with a structural balance, not just the operational balance, but the structural balance. So again, the key assumptions here is that 2.4% revenue growth is conservative but not pessimistic, and it includes everything that's been, as part of the recent development cycle, and we believe that that window is now closing, and we'll hopefully get another development cycle in the next four to five years, but we're trying to be as conservative as we can. Again, no personnel cost increases above those that already been obligated, no COLAs. And it's worth noting that there hasn't been a COLA adjustment for any of our employees outside of fire, they deferred theirs until this past year, really in several years. And the danger for us, as a service industry, is that the benchmark surveys are indicating that we're incongruent with where the market trends are leading for that talent. With people that are leaving our organization to retire, the notion of brain drain is very real for us. Again, as I mentioned, the GRA loan repayment, it has to be secured on a semi-annual basis from the state of California. We're hopeful that legislation will be passed that will lock that in stone, so that the state can't pull it back at the last minute. But we'll have to hopefully get some support in the legislature for that. And most importantly, because I know this was something that the council had become concerned about, as we showed this representation previously in the budget, in terms of the revenues and expenditures not lining up, is that the ISFs, the CIP, the capital, and the OPEB liability, all these areas up here are all discretionary for the city, for the city council. Thus, on these assumptions here, you will have the ability to pay for your operations and your obligations. What happens with CIP, you just don't put any money into CIP. In 2010, 2011, you didn't put any money into CIP. I would argue that that's not the right thing to do, but if you had to do it, you can do it, you control that. You can underfund your internal service funds, it's not recommended to be done over a long period of time, but you can do it if that's the necessity. OPEB, you have to show that liability on your books, on the balance sheet, you don't necessarily have to fund those things. It isn't as though you're defaulting on any of your actual obligations. So I wanna make sure, again, that you understand that, because to the extent that we are operationally balanced, we can muddle through where we are today, that is very real, and again, complicates the story, any sense of urgency that we can put out to the voters. So what does it mean? Well, in our different departments, what we see in the library is where we are today, we have cut back to the bone. We even looked at cutting library branches. The public did not want that. They came to the council and vocally said, "No, we wanna keep our libraries open." But it does mean that we will go bare bones. We will have limited hours, we'll have limited technology, the collections will be as minimal as possible, and staffing will be short, because the staff is what operates the library system. You know, and we have to be careful when it comes to libraries, because it's a bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy. If you cut the service back so far that folks just stop coming because they won't get the resources that they want and need, then they stop coming, and ultimately, the trend, the spiral becomes, fewer folks come into the library, and it becomes a drain on, in terms of return on investment. So we do have to have, if we're going to be in the library business, we have to have a viable library program. In terms of CSP, if people complain about the condition of parks, it's not going to get any better, and in fact, it's going to get a little bit worse, because we continue to deliver new parks where we have none today, and yet we still have to maintain them and deal with increased costs like any other business, in terms of employment costs, in terms of utilities, and anything else. All those increases mean that there is less time, less people to do the types of improvements that folks wanna see at the parks, and programming will be curtailed as well. And we see emergency response. Right now, again, 85% of our calls are EMS calls. And with increased baby boomers that we have in town, that is likely to go up with healthcare reform and people having health insurance, they are likely to use paramedic services, that's been the trend in the studies that we have seen around the country. So the strain is going to be greater. And indeed, we have had this year, and last year was the highest number of calls we've ever had, this year has topped even last year. So, oh, and I'm sorry, in economic development, to the extent that there is no redevelopment program any longer, to the, our ability to attract new investment, to attract those types of businesses that will create opportunities either through new property tax growth, new sales tax growth, and the synergy that comes along with new investment, and other folks wanting to come and invest side by side. We don't have that capacity today, because the redevelopment agency was axed two years ago, and we're trying with literally three people to get the same level of bang for the buck by working with the development community. But we are at a competitive disadvantage, because we won't have the opportunity to draw on that business. So where do we go from now, or for now? And I think it was alluded to by council members earlier in the day, we have to respect what the public sentiment is. The public is telling us that they're not ready for a tax increase. They love the services that they're providing, they love living in Glendale, they're very happy with the value that they're getting, they're just not ready to pay more. On the heels of GWP increases, it is difficult for them to stomach an increase, because to a resident, a revenue or an increase in water or electric may feel, and probably it's no different for them in terms of a special parcel tax, or any other kind of tax that might be levied. So the timing is not right at this point in time. Also, we can live within our means and the established priorities, but the key here is that we cannot be all things to all people. We have done a very good job in solving problems, and when somebody comes in and says that they have a problem, and it's, maybe it's a $50,000 problem, or a $150,000 problem, or a $5,000 problem, we are very quick to try to dedicate the resources or rearrange the level of service to accommodate what that problem will be. But the problem is that you can't do that forever, and you can't operate in a crisis mode forever. And indeed, that's kind of what we're doing now. You can only run so far, so fast, for so long. The NGOs and partners and volunteers that we have, we will make great use of them, just as we are now. And, you know, for better or for worse, depending on who you are and what you believe, we will make use of grants and funding from outside sources. It's only smart to be able to do that. Last but not least, you know, we will stay focused on our long-term goals. The council has set a very aggressive and fiscally prudent agenda, we will continue with that, but we'll also be cool and strategic. The house is not on fire. We actually are doing a good job of maintaining our cost structure, but to the extent that we would like to return services to what folks are telling us that they wanna need, it's not going to happen without additional revenues.
Did all that without, out of glass of water?
Without a glass of water, sir.
Without breathing.
Without breathing.
I have a question for the team, the pollsters. So the 501 randomly selected registered voters, how did you, I know you broke it down geographically, et cetera, and so consequently, how did you break down majority renters in the South, homeowners in the North, Northwest, et cetera? How'd you go about getting the right percentage, so to speak?
So in our sample of these respondents, 65% of the respondents say they own their own home, 33% said they rent their home, 2% refused to answer the question. We did not structure the survey to say, "This many have to be owners, this many have to be renters." What we do to create this sample, to make sure it is proportional to the population we're surveying, which are these likely voters in June, is to make sure it is proportional by age, by gender, ethnicity, and because it's a structure within the voting universe, party registration.
Well, you also mentioned geographic, though. By its nature, in Glendale, geographic means...
Yes.
...or renters in the South.
Yes. So by zip code, or by precinct, is actually how we do it, voting precinct.
There's more questions, I do have one card.
I'll go after the cards, more comments.
Okay, have a seat, we may have a few more questions. Okay, one speaker, Mike Mohill, three minutes.
Good evening, council members and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Tonight, our city staff and city council plan on hiring Sorrel associates for about $80,000. Staff states, "This company has a 95% success rate." In plain English, "The council is using taxpayers' money to hire Sorrel associates to influence and convince us to vote for higher taxes."
Wow.
Let's hear it.
Don't let him go.
We hired him.
I just wanna say...
The point I'm trying to say, the reason I'm going through this, this is a prepared speech, and by three minutes, is because this council, according to the last thing we spoke, was going to talk about this.
Okay, some of my colleagues started to object, I'll overrule them, you get your three minutes, you say anything you want.
Ladies and gentlemen, if the city was being run so efficiently, then why is the city, in the first place, going to an outside consultant to find out where they can find more money from the ratepayers, taxpayers? You keep raising our electric rates, our water rates, that's right. I noticed that the homeowners, 66% said they didn't want any more taxes. That sends a message. Thankful that the people who took their survey said, "No more taxes, please." 'Cause you know, there's an old expression, "You can fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me." Thank you.
Mr. Penfield, in the viewing audience.
Well, clearly, Mr. Mohill represents the 2% that feels that we're doing a poor job. So I've finally got that number, I've finally got the number. But of most importance to me, and I voted against even doing this exercise, but what's most important to me is the 86% that feel they're highly satisfied with life in Glendale and the city services. So I think that's the main reason that people are not interested in new taxes. I think they see, "Hey, the city's well-run, and I just don't wanna pay anymore." And let me add, it's somewhat similar to the poll that was taken on the replacement terminal at Bob Hope Airport, when it was obvious that people were fairly satisfied with the airport. Oh, by the way, they were for it, as long as they didn't have to pay for it. So the idea of a new terminal and not having to pay for it, that seemed to resound with the residents in Burbank. So for me, that's what's most important.
I am also one who voted against this survey, this project, and I voted because I believed that it was not the best use of city funds at this time, because the result was sort of easy to predict. And the results are what they are, they agree with what my position was. However, I am troubled by some things I'm seeing here, they just make no sense, and maybe someone can explain it, although I can't imagine how that's gonna get explained. So let me bring a couple of examples. As I'm looking on page 14, as to the makeup of...
Wait, of what?
14 of the report that was given.
Just so they know.
Page 14. Looking at the ethnic and/or racial, whatever you wanna call it, makeup, background of the individuals, so a question. the individuals who were questioned, and section twenty-two indicates that twelve percent of the whites, so those who identified themselves as whites, identified themselves as Armenian, which if you look at the section twenty-one, sixty-nine percent of those questioned were whites, so help me with the math, but I think it comes out to about seven to eight percent of those participating in the survey were Armenian. Let me take it a step further, and you can take it from there, I see my good friends, Harub Salsunyan and Aboja Parian, maybe they can contribute to dispel my confusion, or I can't understand. Page sixteen, language of interview, it lists some languages, one of them is Western Armenian, one percent. Now, I assure you, I know the Armenian, Glendale's Armenian-American community quite well, and I also assure you that three-fourths of all Armenians in Glendale are Eastern Armenian. It's just a fact, and yet no one responded in Eastern Armenian, where the Eastern Armenian, Armenian-American contingent are the newcomers, they're less likely to be able to respond in English. So I'm trying to understand how, you know, in a city where, according to the census statistics, last census statistics, thirty-nine to forty percent of the residents were Armenian, only eight percent of the surveyed were Armenian. To give another example, also section twenty-one, only six percent of those questions were Asian or Pacific Islander, and I just, I'm sorry, I believe the percentage of Glendale residents that are Asian or Pacific Islander is far higher than six percent. So.
Okay. So I think what I would say first off is, that is why I spoke specifically about the who we interviewed for this survey. These are not all of your residents. These are people who are likely to cast a ballot in the June 2014 special, city special election, which coincides with the statewide primary election. It is a very small segment of your community, roughly about twenty-five to thirty percent. The people who are likely to vote in there are more likely to be white, non-Armenian, not as Asian. Sort of as an example, if you go to question twenty-one, which you were talking about ethnicity, you can see twelve percent self-identify as Hispanic or Latino. If you sort of think about this as the state of California, percentage of California residents who are Hispanic or Latino is very different than our voting population.
In the city of Glendale, this is the right number, twelve percent is about the number of Latinos. So that's actually a good number.
Okay, but in the state of California, residents in the state of California are much more, we're approaching the point where Latinos are, I wouldn't say a majority, but they're about, I think of the last probably, about a third of the population. But voting-wise, they're less than twenty percent.
That's, see, let me stop you right there. I have, in one way or another, participated in every election in one capacity or another for the last twelve, thirteen, fourteen years in the city of Glendale, and I assure you, there is no such discrepancy in the city of Glendale. If you look at every election, the percentages, at least for the last ten years, the percentages of those participating are pretty stable. I mean, that's what troubles me, that's what, I mean, what you're saying is just not the case in Glendale. So with that, I mean, I can't, I'm not going to vote to approve this report.
So to file it?
File, yeah.
Mr. Friedman?
Well, if you think that the different ethnic makeup would have changed the results we got, I don't think that's the case. I mean, we were looking to see whether putting a measure on the ballot that would allow people, not us, but the citizens, the chance of imposing a tax on themselves would have changed, and somehow it would have been more supportive if some of these other groups had been included in the poll, I would really dispute that. I don't think those, so saying that that somehow invalidates this, I mean, what we're looking at here, I mean, this isn't an academic exercise, this was for us to get the information as to whether the, we think we should put this on the ballot, whether there were slightly more people of Armenian descent, slightly less, slightly more Asians, slightly more, I don't think it's going to change. I mean, do you think that would have radically changed the results here? Because I don't think so.
So now we have to rely on someone's word as to how they would have changed? That's why you have a survey. The survey is a scientific process, it should reflect the information properly. And variation between seven to eight percent and forty percent is not a slight difference. It is not a slight difference.
To answer Councilmember Friedman's question, I would say, we could actually show results that show the breakdown demographically of how the survey results.
We ran through a good portion of that rather quickly, it may be worthwhile to go through that now.
Okay, if, I don't think I have the clicker. But, so to answer your point essentially, if the demographics were changed, I can show you various points, and so we're going to have to move back pretty far, I think. So these are for the three ballot measures? I got to find it. Okay, so demographically, now, if you don't want to accept that the percentages we have are correct, I argue with that, I don't accept that, but nevertheless, if we had a higher percentage of Armenians in our survey, actually, support for the measure would go down.
Right.
There would be, less support.
That's my point.
Exactly. And so, the increased proportion of Armenians would actually mean less likely to support this measure in June. Now, I will defend our survey methodology, but if, the argument is, if you change the percentages to reflect a different makeup of the population who votes, it wouldn't change the results of that.
That's not the argument at all. That's something Councilmember Friedman said, that if you think, I don't think that. I'm happy with the results, I agree with the results. I predicted those results. I'm troubled by the methodology, because I'm looking at cold numbers, and they just don't make sense. That's all I'm saying. Otherwise, I'm very happy with the results.
All I can tell you is, the way that the proportionality of this survey, the people who took the survey, is based on past voting behavior. We did not make up these percentages, we looked at past voting behavior, and it is representative of who has cast a ballot in the past elections. So I can't say that there's anything wrong with the proportionality of these survey results.
Okay, Ms. Friedman, you were talking.
Yeah, so, thank you, I appreciate it. So in any case, you can sit down, unless somebody else has.
Stay close.
Yeah, don't go, don't leave, but you can relax. So just in terms of the report, I accept the report, I do agree that I think in some ways, in terms of generating more revenue, we're victims of our success. We've been doing a very good job through the recession, delivering excellent services. Certainly, we're fixing our sidewalks, we're not telling homeowners that they're going to have to start paying for their sidewalks to repair, we're cleaning the streets every week, maybe we shouldn't, some people in the poll say we're cleaning the streets too much. I mean, imagine that in this day and age, for a city to have people come back and say that they're delivering too much service. We have an extremely safe city, public safety is one of, if not the top priorities for our residents, we have an extremely safe city, and people don't see the need, and I'm fine with that. I would accept the report and certainly vote to not put any of these measures on the ballot. And I'm very happy that the city manager also presented the strategies over the next several years about how we're going to be both operationally and structurally balanced and deal with the challenges that we have coming up. I think that will give people some comfort, that, as he said, the house is not burning down. You can always use extra money, you can always spend money and make things better, but I think we're doing a great job as we are, and we will continue to do a great job. Thank you for the presentation, the survey was very interesting, it did validate the Rose Institute survey that we had, that some people said, oh, that wasn't correct, but here we have a second company coming in with an independent company with a larger survey base, again, people saying they're, for the most part, extremely satisfied with city services. And that's good feedback for us, it's good to know what people like and what they don't like. That's important for us to have that feedback from a wide variety of the public that doesn't come here every week or send his emails every week. Thank you, Mr. Pinter.
I have a question before I make my comments. Logically, it would seem to me, the TOT tax, increasing it does not affect a single person in this city. It's people that come to visit the city, why? Because of business or vacation? Is it because of, they got a mindset that the people won't even consider a TOT increase to even catch up with other cities? What's, what is the mindset? To me, it just seems, we don't want taxes, they're not even stopping to think.
My response to that is sort of two. One is, I think there is a mindset of a certain contingent of voters, and it's on the screen, twenty percent who say they would vote definitely, no. There's, in every community, a certain percentage who are tax resistant, they might believe it's bad for the local economy, that it's wrong, it's unfair, whatever their rationale is, there's going to be a sentiment of people who say, it's a tax, I will not support it. So that could be a portion of people here. I also think, in past surveys, we've seen TOTs, because they're not inherently familiar to voters, like a sales tax. I understand what that is, I go buy something, I get a certain percentage charged to how much I pay. The TOT is not necessarily something every voter is familiar with, and you can see on this slide here, at twelve percent, there's a slightly higher undecided vote. So there might be a degree of, I'm not really sure what this tax measure is, and if I don't know what it is, I'm not going to vote yes or no on it until I have some more information.
It's kind of like Mr. Pinter, I served with him on the airport commission, and when the voters found out in Burbank, they're not going to have to pay a penny, wow, they're all for it now. You know, if the voters knew that the TOT wasn't going to affect them at all, it was just going to help bring revenue to the city, they might have a different reaction, but it's not the knowledge of it, and it has that evil word, tax.
Right. And transient, we've seen in other remarks, just sort of on that face, transient people sort of sometimes getting confused, does that have anything to do with homelessness?
It's a question of our outreach and education, communication we have to do on that one.
And just to add on to it, as I think recovered in some of the other slides, you have a block of about thirty-three percent of people that are against any tax, regardless of what it is or what it goes for. And the high sentiment in the community that they feel they're already overtaxed, most likely because of the water rates, electricity rates as well.
So you get that thirty-three, take that off, you're already at sixty-seven percent. You'd have to have everybody else on top.
Exactly.
Just as a middle work. Okay, thank you. As for me, I've, since ninety-seven, I've seen more than two or three kind of similar surveys taken, with similar results in terms of people liking this city. I guess that's the plus to come out of it, just validates what most of the people in this city and what I think the city council members that I've served with in the past and today believe. This is a good city, a good city to live in, it's a safe city, provides good fire and police protection, has good schools, pretty well saved, paved streets, sidewalks that aren't too buckled up. There's a lot of good things they like about the city. So I'm happy for the report in that aspect. I think what has done a disservice to this city, that's my own opinion, you have the traffic and water and power issues, because certain people have got up here each week for years on end complaining about the traffic, complaining about the electrical and water rates, accusing us of not listening to a grand jury, threatening us with lawsuits and everything because we apparently are lying to the general public. Some of this has to sink in, article after article in the local papers, none of them complimentary, all defending the other side of the issue with lack of understanding or any desire to understand the other side. So yeah, they're high. But you look at traffic, for instance, half the population during the day in this city is transitory. They come here to work, they leave in the evening. You have traffic jams in the morning, you have traffic jams in the evening, you can go to every school in Glendale, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, traffic jams in the morning, traffic jams in the evening. I can go out midday, I can go out early morning, I can go out evening, I can drive right through the city. There's no traffic jams, it's transitory, depends on the time of the day. Water and power, we have lower rates than all the cities around. Does anybody care about that? Does anybody really know the bargains they're getting? We don't have a business license tax, we have so few taxes, and yet people seem to think we're being overtaxed, let's get rid of the utility user tax, because certain people get up here and keep saying, oh my gosh, the sky is falling. No, it's just not reality, and we've done, the one thing I get at this, we've done a lousy job of taking the offensive and trying to educate the people better on what we do. I guess it's the old theory, no news is good news. It's much easier in the press to sell bad news. You know, reporters all the time, looking for the story where they can really rip on people. Why tell them the good stuff? I think that permeates society, I watch it on CNN News all the time, hunting for that bad thing that's happening that we can blow out of shape. The redevelopment agency, it was over sixty million dollars that was owed back. Wow, when that starts coming back and we get that sixty million back into the general fund, the CIP, we're going to be okay. Then we got torpedoed by the governor. Let's see what else I write down. I know we're going to have to make hard decisions in the budgets, but that's the hard decisions we're going to be faced with in the short term, for the next five, ten years. We have CIP funds, I think it used to be fifty percent went into it, now we're struggling with five percent or something transferred. Yeah, we let the internal service funds go down, and the last city manager discovered that the hard way, and now we're talking about catching up. You know, if I have to trade that off against, look at the employees, the fewer employees doing more than in the past, and city morale of workers, and saying, okay, you're going to go the next five years, no cost of living, no nothing, because we have to build up the internal service fund or the CIP. I'll hobby being in the boat of saying, okay, I want the employees to get a little increase, because that's the morale thing. We can't afford to lose good personnel, whether they be fire, police, anybody, to other cities that are going to be paying more. I don't know what their financial standings are, but a lot of them, I think, are going in the hole deeper and deeper. See, even the governor of California says, we're out of it, we're balanced, we're moving ahead. And I just go, look at all the long-term debt the state has, which you never hear them talking about. How many cities maybe are doing the same thing? They'll pay, 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 and say, well, there'll be a city council coming along after I'm gone, they can deal with it. I don't choose to do that. But I do think we have to, we're responsive to our employees, we manage to keep and are working harder. I don't know what that amount is, but I'm willing to sacrifice getting the internal service funds and the CIP back to normal and sacrifice the employees. That's a discussion for another day. And I guess the last thing I take away from it is, yes, we have to do a heck of a better job at communicating to the public. I don't know how we're supposed to do it, I brought up the TOT, people don't understand what it means. You know, eventually, if we keep on the way it is, it will come out of it, but we're going to have tougher times. If we have to start closing libraries, street sweeping, people aren't going to like it. And I sit there thinking, maybe we have to get to the point where people are complaining about the hurt, about the libraries, about the street sweeping, about paramedic service or whatever. Maybe we got to let it happen, make people feel hurt, they'll be in here demanding. I've sat through the number of years where the library system was sacrificing as much as everybody else, and madam librarian here remembers it, and people came in here as well as certain council people, said, we can't stand for that, you've got to put more money into the libraries. And I'm sitting there, I think, is that the highest priority? Is that where it ought to go? Is that where it ought to go? But we did. And when it gets to that point, where you have people coming in here complaining about this service and that service and this service, and we can compare these charts that you did this time, and it'll probably be down to two, four percent, a little minority will come in here, and as I've seen over the years, council, whatever's sitting here, will react to that little minority group, and give them what they want after sacrifice at something more important. But in the nature being what it is, unless we can educate the people, some outreach, you know, we have so many organizations this town, we could send staff out every week for the next year or two, starting right with Mr. Ochoa, the whole way down. Maybe we can educate, but you go to these meetings, a fraction of the population of this city come out. Why? Because they have jobs, they have children. You get up in the morning, you turn on the hot water, it's there. You turn the lights on, they're there. You get in your car and you drive out, there's no bumps like in L.A. Pretty well, you know you're in Glendale when you're on our streets. They go out, take their kids to school, good school system. They work a long day, they come home with their, with their kids. Same thing I did all my life until I got into this political business. You know, you don't stop to think about how the city has to operate, what it has to do. You take it for granted. Oh, there's going to be a meeting tonight to tell me about TOT. Ah, what the heck? I don't care about that. The city here, we know what the impacts can be, the benefits from additional revenue. And I don't know how to reach all those people. I doubt if we ever will. Anyhow, I think it was a great report. I think I understand how you did it. How many years has Sorrel been in business? And, yeah, it popped right out. How many years?
Sorrel was founded in October of nineteen sixty-six, and-
Nineteen sixty, you got a few years under your belt.
Yes, sir.
And your company?
Our company was founded in nineteen eighty-one.
Now, you got a few years, too. So, I mean, I accept what you did. I think you did a good report. I'm going to hang on to it. You know, it's going to be useful in the future when we have to talk to people. Well, this is the reality, right? Thank you very much, and-
Were you also advocating that we unleash Scott Ochoa?
The what? That we what?
That we unleash Scott Ochoa?
Yeah. He can go for hours. He can go for hours.
Do some outreach out there.
I couldn't do that. Anyway, I talked long enough. There's a motion to note and file on this. Is there no action? We've just been informed.
There has not been a motion made yet.
I will make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian? Quintero?
Yes.
Sinonian?
No.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for coming. Very enlightening report. Okay, what is next, please?
Next item on the agenda is a D to the Attorney regarding resolution supporting scope of environmental review of proposed replacement terminal project at Burbank-Bahrop Airport, including proposed governance changes for the Burbank-Lincoln Airport Authority. D1 is resolution of support.
I understand that this, this has all the elements that we asked in last week, and I think the airport has seen it too, what we're proposing, the resolution.
Yes, sir.
And is comfortable with it. That reflects what we said.
We had a discussion last week, and this will move us forward with the environmental impact report, among other things, so I will move the item.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian? Quintero?
Yes.
Sinonian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Okay, first speaker is Gate Mar Road. I get it right?
Yes, yes, quick. Hi, good evening, mayor and councilor member and the honourable. Today, I come to talking about my, my house, Simla is his study. I want to speak it up because I don't want everybody, I mean, to have experience like I do. I bought a house, five twenty-four, just in, in September twenty. After that two weeks, I got the notice of violation. Yeah, surprise, but after I got that, I tried to investigate what happened, what's going on, which step I do wrong. So first thing that I check, I check with my neighbor, what, when, why, how, and then I found out the inspector come to my property on, okay, let's go back a little bit. This house was sold by the bank by April twenty-five to the Lee Baker, who's an investor. He buy this house, investor, inspector come on, investor come on May twenty. In between, by the time that they flipping the house, because the neighbor complaining that the fence is too high, and they flipped the house without the floor. So, and investor come for two time on the property, and I just got the notice after I bought the house from two weeks. So it's, they said they come to my property on October eighth, but it's about four months and a half after they come to the property at the first time, and they didn't give the notice to the investor before me. So I want to asking, I mean, what's going on, why this thing is happening? I mean, why it take that long to get to that point?
Okay. Obviously, we can't answer that question tonight. I gave your card to our city clerk if you put your-
Yes, yeah.
Oh, can you explain all thing?
I can.
Oh, I just, when you're finished, I'll give your phone number to the city clerk.
And the thing is, another thing when the lady talking about how to educate the people, I recommend you can educate people by Facebook, social network, anything twisted. I mean, that's the way how the people, I mean, get closer to the city. For me, this is my first time buyer. I try to understand the way the city councilor working too, and I want to know what's going on. I try to communicate.
So, so you're social media?
I'm not social media, but I'm in the network. Every people in this age is about network, so.
Good point, except I'm in my seventies, and I'm totally out of it. You're talking about the new generation, so some of these people can understand what you're saying.
I see.
But in your case, if you give the phone number, and Mr. Agani, I think wants to get it too. Thank you for coming.
Right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I love my city of Glendale. I've lived here for over fifty-eight years. Over these many years, I have spoken against water and electric rate increases, against bond debt, the illegal transfer of money from Glendale Water and Power, GWP, to the general fund, to help pay for the salaries and pensions of our union workforce. I've also spoken about the unfairness of city employees having salaries and pensions greater than the folks who have to pay the bills. The public knows me as a straight shooter and a fiscal conservative. Therefore, yesterday, I took out nominating papers to run for the council seat of Mr. Kim Terrell.
Stop the clock. Don't get into that you filed papers to run or start talking about the election. That is against our policy. It'll be in the paper tomorrow that you took out paperwork as well as the other five, but you're not going to stand here and start broadcasting to the community. Understand?
Thank you, Mayor Weaver, and the general public. Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just, that is a correct statement of our policy, that electioneering, such as it is, is, while all other forms of comments and commentary and criticism of the public agency are fair game.
Right.
Electioneering is not, not part of our oral communication policy.
And unfortunately, we're prepared or going to expect more of this in subtle ways to try to get their message out to the public. And I just, I'm going to need coaching at some times, Mr. Garcia, when I can or can't stop. Okay, what is next?
Next item is if there's any new business.
Yes, I have new business. I would like to move that pursuant to Article Eight, Section One of the City Charter and Government Code, Section five four nine five seven point one A five. The council hereby approves the city attorney's appointment of Ann M. Maurer as Chief Assistant City Attorney for Liability and Risk Management, and further, that a written copy of this motion shall be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the City of Glendale, as the written statement required by Article twenty-four, Section Five, Subsection Two of the Charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian? Quintero?
Yes.
Sinonian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, and congratulations, Ann. Very well deserved. So, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for approving that motion. I do have two other items of new business as well. One is for the Housing Authority, and one is for the city council. And the city has reached a settlement with PNC, which is in the ADI litigation, so this is not a settlement of all of the litigation, but it's only a settlement with the development partnerships for Metropolitan City Lights, Glendale City Lights, and Vastar City Lights, now controlled by PNC. And it is essentially providing a three-point-five million dollar payment from Vastar City Lights, a PNC-controlled partnership, to the Housing Authority, which then becomes program income for the Housing Authority to use for its purposes. So I'll read the motions, and then ask that the council approve them. The motion is that the Housing Authority hereby approves a settlement agreement among the Housing Authority and the city of Glendale on the one hand, and Glendale City Lights, Metropolitan City Lights, and Vastar City Lights on the other hand, in the case of the Housing Authority of the city of Glendale et al. versus Salim Karimi et al., case number B C four six zero zero four four. Settlement agreement includes a payment from Vastar City Lights to the Housing Authority in the amount of three-point-five million dollars in exchange for a commitment by the Housing Authority to use said proceeds to pay down the principal balance of the Housing Authority's loan to Vastar City Lights and other terms acceptable to all parties. The executive director or as designated is authorized to execute said settlement agreement, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney. So I ask that that motion be made by the Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Authority members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian? Caro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Chair Sinonian?
Yes.
And then ask the same motion with the same wording be approved by the council.
So moved.
Before that, let me ask the city attorney, do we also have to adjourn the Housing Authority meeting?
We do. Well, let's do it after the motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Friedman? Is there a second? Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinonian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Stand adjourned on the housing for the city council?
Motion to adjourn in memory of-
In memory of-
So moved. Gotcha, Dorian.
And I'm second.
Stand adjourned at eight twenty-eight.